First, it's higher priority and we also want our new senior pastor to have a role in choosing the associate. So we felt it was more important to focus first on the senior pastor position. I'll give you a little outline of the call process as a whole and then we'll talk about the ministry site profile document. The first step in the process is for the pastor to resign and then the bishop appoints the interim pastor. That's the procedure because it's thought that we will have a more successful transition when we have a buffer period between the old pastor and the new with an interim position. So obviously that has been done. We are lucky to have two great interim pastors, senior and associate. And then the next step was creating the ministry site profile document. There's also another document that goes with it called the seven reflections. That was included in the notice about the town hall. I'm going to be sending an update this week, I hope, in the buzz and perhaps can link the document there as well for the congregation to access. But what the ministry site profile is, is basically it's the church version of a job posting. It's a really detailed document that describes our church, our priorities, what particular characteristics we think are important for our next pastor, and gives that candidate just a better idea of what we're looking for. So that document has been approved. It was approved a couple of weeks ago by the church council and it is now live on the ELCA website. So it is basically our job posting is out there and we're now waiting for candidates. That is the next step in the process. So the way this process works, it's not like when you're trying to hire someone in in the secular world where you just solicit resumes and start going through them. Everything goes through the bishop. So we have our ministry site profile posted and then the bishop will be going through people who have put their ministry version of a resume out advertising that they are interested in seeking positions. The bishop will go through those and look for potential candidates for us and then the bishop will nominate a candidate or candidates, but usually it's just one at a time for us to consider. Then we interview. The call committee does the interview process. When we find someone that we feel is appropriate and wants to continue with us, we approve and nominate that person to the church council. Then if the church council approves, develops a compensation package, then ultimately it would go to a congregational meeting for the church to meet this person and then vote on our next pastor. So right now where we're at is we are waiting for a candidate from the bishop. And we had a meeting this week with the bishop's representative and I'm pretty optimistic that this process will get moving pretty soon. The senior pastor position, like I said, is easier to fill. And in particular, St. Mark's, we're a large church, we're financially stable. We're a very attractive church. So I'm really hopeful about this process moving forward. Obviously, we all want to get through this as quickly as we can, but just appreciate everyone's prayers in that regard. The ministry site profile document, just give you a little outline of our priorities that we put in there. We are looking for an experienced pastor for the senior position. We have put in the document basically that we want five or more years of experience, but really I think in our discussions, we've talked about someone on the lower end of that would probably have to be a pretty exceptional candidate. We are a large church and we do want someone with a good amount of experience. Our mission priorities that we've outlined in the document are that we want to work strengthening youth ministry. We want to increase discipleship and small group engagement in the congregation. And we want to continue the growth that we've experienced in commitment to mission work. So the document as a whole provides more detail, but those are the three priorities that we really highlight a lot throughout the document for what we expect our senior pastor to help us do. Pretty good outline, I think, of where we're at right now in the process. If anyone has any questions, you can either, I guess, raise your hand and ask or it might be easier to put them in the chat box. But if anyone has any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll have an update in the buzz this week and I'm going to include in there my email address. So you can reach out to me by email as well if you have questions. Not sure where the noise is coming from. Okay, that's better.
Pastor, you're muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you, pastor.
Okay, I apologize for that. One person was unmuted and apparently I was muted. So does anybody have any questions for Sarah about call process or the ministry site profile? Please raise your hand. I didn't see any questions in the chat room. You're all feeling like this is going, yes, Kurt. Please unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm just curious, how long is that posted on ELCA site then for candidates? Is that for two weeks? Is it until the position is filled or how long will that be posted?
I think it stays posted until the position is filled.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong about that, but that's my understanding.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. When you met with the bishop's representative this past week, did he or she give you an idea about roughly when they might have candidates for you to interview?
He sounded pretty optimistic that within the next couple of months, he thought they would have someone, but of course, you know, it depends. He did say they have several, what they're called profiles is the equivalent of a resume for pastors. They have several profiles that they're going through right now and looking for people that they think are appropriate for St. Mark's. And he was very encouraging again that this is, this is the type of position that is an aspiration for pastors, is a long-term goal, a senior pastor position at a church like St. Mark's. So compared to the associate pastor position, which is harder to fill, there is, there is a shortage of pastor candidates. That's a problem nationwide, but he was very encouraging about the timeline, I think. And but we have to think long term too. I mean, I think our real goal is by the fall to have, to have a senior pastor. Because the process itself takes a while. There are so many steps with the interview and then all the different levels that have to approve.
Very good, very good. Any other questions? Okay, now I'm going to give an analogy to this, that there are parts of this process that resemble a hiring process. And you know, there's interviews and like Sarah was saying, there is paperwork that's a little bit like a job posting or a little bit like on the pastor's end, a resume. But it's actually quite a bit longer than that. I think that congregations is your, is our ministry site profile about 13 pages long, Sarah? And if you can imagine, what pastors have to fill out is 16 pages. I never thought that was very fair because there's just one of me and I've got to fill out more paperwork, but that's the way it is. And another way of thinking about this in human terms is that this is an election process because ultimately this is the leader that will be voted on by St. Mark's for being your future senior pastor and leader. And so if you think about it, a hiring process can sometimes go very quickly, but election processes almost always take a longer amount of time. And that's because you're really picking a leader for the whole congregation, not just someone to fill a particular job position. And so that's one of the reasons that it typically in our system takes longer. So I hope that's helpful. If there's no other questions about the ministry site profile or the call process, I'd like to go to Sarah's husband Derek to review the proposed changes to the constitution that have been submitted for vote next Sunday.
Thank you, pastor, and good morning, everyone. This is the second time we've talked at a town hall about the constitution process. I'll just give a quick overview of why we are asking the congregation to approve the restatement of the constitution next Sunday. Out of our council retreat in February, one of our priorities was focused on organizational management and really just making sure that the overarching church documents, the constitution, the bylaws are consistent with our practices and if there's anything that we can do to improve upon it. And shortly after Pastor Westfall joined us as our incoming senior pastor, he identified that our constitution was very stale. What happens in the ELCA is every three years, the national church publishes a model constitution. And as a member ELCA congregation, we are required to adopt certain mandatory provisions. And the last time our church went through the a review of our constitution was 2011. Since then, the ELCA has published three new model constitutions. So as a starting point, we certainly wanted to bring forward our constitution to align with the national church's recommended terms or required terms. And so in the model council or the proposed constitution, which was circulated with the meeting notice for our town hall this morning, you will see that the required provisions are noted with an asterisk. And probably about 75 to 80% of the constitutional provisions are all required by the ELCA. The areas where each individual congregation can customize their, the constitution to the unique circumstances of their church is chapters 11 to 13. And that was really the focus of our constitution committee, which I should say I'm very grateful for the efforts. We formed a committee to review it. It consisted of myself as vice president of council, current council president Case Pudik, and the three most recent congregational presidents, which were Dean Hefta, Kirk Heinz, and Cindy Calvert. And Pastor Westfall served on that committee and we had a great discussion of, you know, there were certain provisions of our existing constitution which didn't fit our practices and and we had a robust discussion on areas that we can improve upon. And you know, one of the nice things I think that we're very blessed with is Pastor Westfall has served as a senior pastor in many different ELCA congregations and he could say, well, why are we doing things this way? And he shared his experiences as far as what he's seen work well and things that maybe could be improved upon in our constitution. And one of the major changes is that we are me, right now we have a, a council of 12 members. And in the 12 members, the recommendation was that we were a little heavy on the finance side of things. We had on council, the finance chair, which is currently Dale Klaus, and then we had a financial secretary in Angela Kemp and a treasurer in Gary Cook. The proposed restatement after the conclusion of Angela and Gary's terms, they will still be officers of the church and continue to fulfill their important roles, but they will no longer actually be full voting members of council. And we are proposing that those two positions will be replaced with whoever is the mission coordinators currently, Nick and Pam Ripley, and then the memorialist chair, which is Cindy Calvert. And those will be positions that will be voted on at the next at next week's annual meeting. And I think from my perspective that that's our, you know, really the growth of our mission ministry in the past decade. And I think it really should help continue strengthening that important ministry. The other aspect of the constitution that I wanted just to highlight briefly, and I've been on council now for two years and I know as a new council member, it was a bit overwhelming because our records and certain bylaws or continuing resolutions were kind of scattered all over the place. And you know, we were very reliant upon Pastor Bates and other members of council that have long institutional memories, which were very helpful, but the restated constitution that was included in your materials now has sections, bylaw sections and continuing resolution sections, which hopefully will make preserve that institutional knowledge in a much more user-friendly manner, because if you would look at things like, well, if I'm on, if I'm the chair of the finance team, what does that mean? If I'm chair of the worship team or the health ministry team, what are my responsibilities? And Pastor Westfall coordinated with all current council members to try and capture what the roles and responsibilities are. Just as a procedural matter, at next week's annual meeting, the constitution just has to be approved by 50% of the voting members. We were able to, since we were bringing our constitution into conformity with the model ELCA constitution, we were able to kind of fast track changes. Usually constitutional changes are difficult to do. It's usually a much more cumbersome process if you were doing this outside of the ELCA update. Bylaws provision, any bylaw section that's below and that's incorporated into the, into the document, those are also required to be changed only by a congregational vote. So those are difficult to change as well. Continuing resolutions can be changed at the council level. And the last thing I will add is that our constitution as part of this process has been reviewed by our senate and the senate has approved it. Council has reviewed it twice and voted to include it on the agenda for the annual meeting and a meeting in December. And we are looking forward to checking this off our church's to-do list and hopefully it will be approved next Sunday. So with that, I'll pause and see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any, nothing in the chat room. Very good. Thank you, Derek, for several months. You in particular, but I know you had the help of many people, really worked hard to bring this kind of up to speed, more in alignment with what our current practices or what St. Mark's wants to be doing as well as what the ELCA model constitution is. So this is one of those behind the scenes that may not be, you know, as dramatic as some of the more visible things, but this is laying a good foundation for your future ministry. Um, let me go to the next person, which is Dale, Dale. And I think that Pastor Steve has it so that he can share the budget on the screen, as you wish.
Okay, thank you, pastor. Good morning, everyone. I'm Dale Klaus. I'm the chair of the finance team. And as Derek mentioned earlier, the finance team is comprised of Angela Count, who's our financial secretary, Gary Cook, who's our treasurer, and me as the chair. Finance team has a number of responsibilities having to do with oversight of the church's finances, but one is the, one of the most important parts of what we do is put together an annual budget for review and consideration by the church council and then ultimately by vote of the, vote of approval by the church, by church congregation. And that vote is for the annual meeting coming up next. I'll give a little bit more of the highlights of what finance team has been up to this past year. But I'd like to focus this morning on how we arrived at our proposed budget for 2021. We of course operate on a calendar year, fiscal year, so our budget is from January 1 through December 31st. And we tend to work from looking at our prior year budget. Actually, we look at several years prior budgets, but we look importantly at what we actually spent during the prior year. So and what we actually took in an income during the prior 12 months. So with 2020 being an unusual year, to say the least, with the pandemic and being, having online worship as often as we, as we have, it's been a little bit difficult to project 2021 income and expenses based on actual expenses for this year. But I think we've done a decent job with regard to putting that together. The, I met with pastoral staff and, and lay staff persons who were involved with, with the actual spending in the church and they reviewed their individual budgets and made recommendations for 2021. Those recommendations were all put together in a draft budget that was then reviewed by the executive team. And we went back based on income projections. We went back and attempted to reduce our proposed expenditure levels for 2021. We did that again by, by meeting again with staff, people and pastoral staff and the executive team and made some modest reductions in budgets. Proposed spending to match up better with our projected budget. So that then was submitted to the church council and the church council at its special meeting, I believe it was on the, in early December. I'm sorry, early January, did vote to recommend the budget that you see ahead of you in your, on your screens. Now, our goal, of course, is to arrive at a balanced budget. But I do want to say that it's important that everyone on the congregation understands that we do have a policy in place that we at least have in reserve, the equivalent of one month's worth of projected expenses. And I can talk with you a little bit about that as we get further along in the discussion. But we do have what we're not seeing in the proposed budget, we see on our balance sheet. And our balance sheet does demonstrate that we have more than sufficient monies held in reserve to cover any unforeseen circumstances or budget shortfalls. When we look at our income projections for 2021, we see the total amount of income that we are projecting at $608,617. And that is compared against an actual income of $745,762. Well, the reason why that actual number is as high as it is is if you will go up in that middle column, you'll see that there is a line called paycheck protection program. And in April, the church received a low interest loan, which we are hopeful will be converted to a grant or the loan would be forgiven. We expect that that will happen in the next few weeks. But we received a low interest loan of $113,900 and that was to cover payroll, primarily cover payroll expenses for a time when revenues were not coming close to matching our expenses to keep people fully employed. This was done primarily to assist our daycare program because they did have to close down for a period of time, but it also came in very handy for our church operations as well. That 113,9 is, does not appear again in the 2021 budget, of course. No. We do have the opportunity and we very likely will take advantage of that opportunity to apply again for the second round of the payroll protection program and there may be another low interest loan forthcoming in 2021 that again could have the potential of being forgiven. But at this point, when we budgeted for 2021, we did not include any additional loan proceeds. So the primary difference, if we look at apples to apples comparison, if we look at the annual giving line, you'll see that in 2020, our annual giving, which constitutes pledged and unplugged income, pledged and unplugged income, total $628,579. So far, our pledged income and a projection for our unplugged income gets us to $594,267. I'm confident that that number will grow. As a matter of fact, I think we've picked up an additional pledge after this budget recommended, recommendation was approved by council, which would bring that number up, that budgeted number up a little bit over, maybe over a little over $600,000. And to be honest, we did underestimate our unplugged income for 2021 compared to prior years. One thing that we do see is that when we are not in sanctuary worshiping, our unplugged income, as you can imagine, is reduced. We, when we have in sanctuary worship, more folks will, will contribute as when they are in, in the sanctuary worship service. But that $594,267 is a somewhat conservative number and we are optimistic that that we will exceed that budget number. The only other thing I'd like to point out on the revenue side is there is a line item called Thrivant and we're budgeting in 2021, a figure of $10,300. Now, the Thrivant program has in the past been shown as a dedicated account in our dedicated funds and has never appeared in our general operating budget as income. We looked into that Thrivant program and realized that there is no expectation from Thrivant as to how that money is to be allocated. There are no restrictions on the expense of that money, on the expenditure of that money. So while we are continuing to track the Thrivant income, the decision was made to move Thrivant income into our annual operating budget. So this $10,300 actually represents the balance of the Thrivant monies that are currently being held in the, in the dedicated accounts, moving that over to operating and then figuring about $600 a year of new money coming in under the Thrivant program. So totaled, our income represents $608,617. Now, if we can scroll down a little bit on the expense side, we'll see that our budget is still organized as we have typically organized it by mission or ministry until we get to the second page where we look at payroll allowances and benefits. And one thing that we did do differently this year for purposes of summary and presentation is to consolidate individual line items to make it clearer and more easily understood to the, to the reader of the budget. So what you'll see now is we have consolidated all of the payroll allowances and benefits for the senior pastor, for the associate pastor, and then a combination of payroll allowances and benefits for our lay staff. So the, it makes it much cleaner to look at and we can also, if anybody is interested, take a look at by contacting the church officer, Tammy or Yvonne, they will provide you with a They will provide you with a detailed explanation of how we arrived at those figures. But you can see that the total payroll allowances and benefits for 2021 totals 406,351. That's the lion's share, uh, of our total budget, about two thirds of our total budget. That is up, um, uh, 20, let's see. A little over $30,000s over what we actually spent, uh, in 2020 on, on the payroll side. How did we get that increase? We got that increase in primarily in looking at the associate pastors line item. And you'll see that we've got a budget for 2021 of $61,000 compared to what we actually spent in 2020 of $41,000. And the reason for that difference is that in 2020, we really only were paying for, uh, Pastor Steve for approximately six months. In 2021, we are budgeting for a nine month period where we will have, uh, an interim, an interim, uh, and or, uh, permanent, uh, associate pastor for nine months. Uh, I think, uh, we wanted to make certain that before, uh, searching for a permanent, uh, in, uh, uh, associate pastor, that we bring on our new senior pastor first. Uh, so there may be a period of time in 2021, uh, during the summer months, for example, where we will not be having an associate pastor. So we budgeted for nine months rather than actually spending for six months, as you see in the middle column there. That represents about $20,000 of that increase. Um, the, uh, the other thing has to do with, uh, uh, merit increases and bonuses. Uh, that number is, is, uh, more or less available to provide for performance increases during the course of the year. Each of our, uh, the, the executive team, uh, takes a look at the, in the first quarter uh, of a, of a new fiscal year and takes a look at the performance of lay staff in the prior year and makes a determination whether or not performance of a bonus is appropriate. Um, the, uh, you'll notice that in, in 2019, uh, there was a budget figure of 14,000. The actual amount actually spent in 2019 for merit increases and bonuses was a little over $5,000. So, uh, the exec team is, uh, very conservative in the distribution of, uh, bonuses, but it does, uh, obviously want to recognize, uh, superior performance, uh, when, uh, when we see it. So there's we've budgeted for 10,000 in that line item. Um, so our total payroll allowances and benefits budget for four, for 2021 is 406,351. Um, we can then scroll down to the property line. Uh, property category, those are the two areas that I just wanted to kind of, two of the three areas I wanted to kind of highlight. And you'll see that in property, uh, property is perhaps our second most, um, uh, expensive part of our budget each year. And you'll see that our budget for 2021 uh, totals 143,865 compared to an actual property expense of in 2020 of just over 102,000. The big reason for that is that, uh, I can't remember exactly what month. It was either September or October. Uh, the, uh, church council decided that in order for us to be able to sustain in, uh, sanctuary worship, uh, it was important for us to make certain that, um, our sanctuary and church and public areas in the church, well, actually the entire church, uh, was, um, uh, uh, cleaned satisfactorily, sanitized satisfactorily. And so what we ended up doing was hiring of an Akin, a custodial service uh, to come in, I believe they come in four days a week now, uh, to sanitize the church and they do come in between services on Sundays. Uh, so that, uh, started at the tail end of 2020, but we are budgeting for 12 months of the contractual cleaning services in 2021. So that is a, a significant difference in the property budget uh, going to, from 102 to 143. Um, couple other modest changes. We've got, uh, about a, uh, $6,000 increase in grounds maintenance. We're still in property here. Uh, $6,000 increase in grounds maintenance. Uh, that's because we, um, uh, have hired a, um, a, a neighborhood, uh, young man to, uh, mow our lawns. Uh, and, uh, uh, as a result of us no longer having an in-house custodian. So the custodial services has been farmed out to a, uh, a neighborhood young man to do that, those services for us. So we put that in the property line, uh, under church, under grounds maintenance. Um, anyway, so we are, the property budget has gone up significantly from what we've actually spent in 2020. Now we can scroll down on the last item I'd like to mention with regard to the expenditures would be in our benevolences. Um, and, uh, the, you'll see that, uh, in 2020, actual we budget, we actually spent in benevolences, $71,400. And you'll see the list of the benevolences and how we budgeted for them in, in 2020. Um, the, uh, in 2021, let me go back. If our policy has always, has been for years, um, that the, the amount of benevolences that we would distribute, the total amount of benevolences to be distributed should equal 10% of our item, of our budgeted income for the year. So 10% of our income is pretty much automatically allocated, uh, to benevolences. Uh, the list of benevolences for, uh, 2022 has not, I'm sorry, for 2021 has not changed from 2020. And I believe that the 2020 benevolences was unchanged from 2019. Uh, there have probably been very little change to the actual organizations that have received benevolence, uh, contributions from our church for a few years. One of the objectives that the executive committee has, uh, and, uh, uh, the church council finance will be involved as well. Um, uh, the, uh, is to review our benevolences and make sure that we are all in sync with what agencies the church, uh, wants to, uh, to give, uh, contributions to. So there will be a policy statement coming out early in the year, probably during the first quarter of the year. Uh, certainly by second quarter of looking at how we go about arriving at what benevolences we, uh, contribute to each year. We do know that, um, the ELCA, uh, CI, CSIS benevolences is something that is built in and will, will remain uh, among our list of benevolences, uh, in an ongoing way. And ELCA, uh, receives, currently receives the lion's share of our total benevolences. Uh, but you'll notice that our benevolences in, in our budget has, uh, dropped to 60,862 compared to the 71,4 that we spent. The reason is that our income, our projected income for 2021 is less than our project, our budgeted income for 2020. So we, uh, correspondingly reduced the amount of money that would be available for our benevolences uh, to, uh, represent the 10% of our, of our budgeted income. Uh, so with a total expense budget of 695,873 compared to our budgeted income, uh, we see that our, uh, uh, we would end up the year, if unless we did something, we would end up the year in a deficit of $87,000. Uh, uh, an operating deficit of $87,000. Fortunately for us is that in 2020, we generated actually in our operating budget, we generated, uh, $89,265 in income over our actual expenses. So that $89,265 becomes available to us to use as revenue in our 2021 budget. So that by plugging that figure back into our 2021 budget, we will end up with a projected operating balance at the end of the year of just over $2,000. Now, you might ask, well, why, why, uh, wouldn't we put that operating balance uh, back into our dedicated account and hold it in reserve? Well, uh, that's, that would be a good question, but I think what we find is that, uh, number one, we have a need to use that operating money that we generated in 2020 to balance our budget in 2021. And also when we look at our, uh, our, uh, general fund reserves going into 2021, we have a reserve of over $200,000. 203,000. That is more than sufficient to cover our current, uh, policy uh, of how much we need to maintain in reserve. Uh, our reserve right now, uh, as I mentioned, we're going to be looking at putting together a revised policy, but we may, it, it may be appropriate for us to keep a reserve of approximately that much money, three to four months' worth of operating expenses. Uh, doesn't seem to be, uh, to me, uh, an outlandish expectation, especially when we have situations like we've experienced in 20, uh, in 2020. So with that, I'll just, uh, open it up for questions. I noticed that there were a couple written ones, uh, see if I can pull those up here. Um, I, this is from Kurt and Nancy Volvo. Uh, on the 2020 PPP loan, has St. Mark's filed for loan forgiveness? Or has it not? Since there still seems to be some flux in the forgiveness parameters. Uh, the, we are at the point now where we believe that we have been updated, I think just that, actually in the last week or two. Uh, Derek has, uh, uh, sent us new paperwork that, uh, new forms, a simplified format for applying for loan forgiveness, which makes it, which will make it much easier to demonstrate uh, our eligibility for loan forgiveness. Uh, as you may be aware, the, the, uh, uh, the parameters have changed now significantly for, uh, businesses and not-for-profits that received uh, PPP loans, uh, up to, uh, $150,000, which we would fall into that category to make it much simpler to apply for and to be eligible for loan forgiveness. So now that we've got those revised forms, we are just going to confirm with, uh, Heartland Bank in Washington that those forms are now the forms we can use. And once we get that in place, we're going to go ahead and move forward to make application. Once we make application for forgiveness, we expect that we will, we will receive that forgiveness in very short order. Um, I hope that answers your question. Um, there by, and then the next question was by eliminating the custodial position, what is the cost between custodian versus additional cleaning service, grounds care, et cetera? Um, I don't know if Tammy's online right now with, uh, for this meeting, but, uh, I am thinking that the, uh, amount that we were, we were budgeting for custodian services, um, is equivalent to what we were, what we are paying the knock-in. The, the difference is the knock-in is not providing, uh, grounds maintenance. Uh, somebody said something. Anyway, the difference is the knock-in is not providing grounds maintenance services. So that's why we, uh, had to add a little bit of money in there for, um, for lawn mowing. Um, but I believe that the, it's about a, uh, a wash on the Venak and contract compared to what we were paying uh, uh, for, um, for our in-house custodian. And that's not to say that, by the way, once we get past the pandemic, that, um, uh, that, uh, and we no longer have the need to sanitize as, uh, as we do right now. The, uh, that the church may end up, church, uh, council may end up looking at reinstating or re, re-establishing the custodian position. Um, next, uh, question from Linda Anglin, uh, excuse me. By the funds for the Main Street building, if we have $200,000 plus in reserve, why have the benevolence? Yes, there's more, quite more to that question. Um, I can't see what the remainder of that question is, but I think what you're asking, if I'm getting your drift correct, oh, okay. Uh, why have the benevolence to ELCA and CSI has been reduced? Uh, good question. Um, the, um, actually it's two questions, uh, but I'll take the second part first. The, uh, once we have a handle on, um, uh, a revised policy on what we need to retain in reserves, we may be able to better answer that question, um, Linda, uh, the, uh, but for now, the decision has been made to, to basically continue the practice of allocating 10% uh, of our income, budgeted income to the list of benevolences in the same way that the benevolences have been distributed in the past. So that's the best I can give you right now in the answer to that question, but, uh, we do know that, um, uh, as a result of our getting, um, uh, I should point out too, that the Mission Endowment Fund has, uh, generously provided uh, uh, endowment, uh, in-interest, uh, to, uh, ELCA, not only to, uh, to specific programs of the ELCA. So this number is not anywhere near what, um, what the church is actually distributing to ELCA. It is a good question though, because I, I think, Linda, you may know, was it, was it, was the expectation that, um, the 40% or was it 50% of our total benevolences be allocated to, uh, ELCA? I, I, I want to say that it was 40% of, uh, but, uh, anyway, more than what we have budgeted is actually going to ELCA. Um, the next question is, are there funds for the Main Street building budgeted? There are no, there's no money specifically budgeted for the Burton Street property, if that's what you're referring to. Uh, other than utility costs and maintenance costs, uh, on that building. Uh, we expect, I believe sometime during the, before the end of the first quarter, uh, a report from the Burton Street Task Force, uh, coming before, uh, the council uh, to, uh, start narrowing down our options and, uh, uh, potential objectives for how we would like to reuse, uh, the Burton Street property. It's a little, uh, premature, I think, at this point to actually put money in the budget for improvements. Uh, but I, I think we need to also keep in mind that beyond our basic, um, utilities and upkeep of the property, uh, if we're looking at significant costs, um, then, uh, generally what the church will end up doing would be, uh, coming back to the congregation, requesting a special appeal, uh, just like we did on the building, on a church addition. Uh, you know, I mean, our, our operating budget is not designed to cover huge, uh, capital expenses. Uh, we do have in our dedicated account, under our property dedicated funds, about $96,000 that does not show in our operating budget. It's a restricted fund and it's available for, uh, unforeseen capital projects or significant capital improvements that could not be normally included in an operating budget. So that would be maybe a, a, a starting point, but it's pretty, uh, early on to know, uh, what, um, what kind of resources we may need to, uh, to make that Burton Street property, uh, what kind of resources we may need to uh to make that Burton Street property uh functional for our, for new use case.
Yeah, I'll kind of just piggyback on uh your response to both of those questions from Linda. The um, the benevolence question, I believe it looks like it's about forty seven percent of our total benevolence that went to uh ELCA CSI S. And I think we tried to stay consistent from last year to this year uh with that forty seven percent. So since the total benevolences went down, because our our revenue went down, that's the reason why that amount goes down. But the percentage we're giving towards um the ELCA CSI S is intended to stay the same. So there's been no change in in policy. You know, and and what we're going to look to do this year with the benevolences is really to um to use one of our values, be more purposeful about how we select them in the amounts that go towards each. And so that's the, that's the reference Dale was making. Um, two benevolences that we're going to look to have a bit of a more, when we present benevolences to the congregation, we can say this is, this is why we're doing what we're doing and how we went about it. Uh, I think we've been staying the course the last couple of years, so to speak, with um just uh keeping the list the same and then keeping the percentages the same. Uh, only because we're not sure how we arrived at the list, uh nor are we sure how we arrived at what those percentages are or why we did that. So um, we're kind of uh reevaluating that to uh be able to explain and have a rationale behind that in the future. Uh, not necessarily change anything, but just be able to to share with the congregation reasons for why we're doing what we're doing. Um, in regards to the funds for the Main Street building, uh, no, we do not have anything specifically set aside, but um the Burton House team is um in, actually in February, they have, uh, it sounds like they're going to be ready to present some concepts to council. Um, and once we begin to have a vision for where we're headed with Burton House, then we'll have a sense of, you know, budgetary needs. In the, in the ministry site profile, you notice that we, we did not uh offer a parsonage. Um, and I, I would say that, you know, obviously this is a a vote on council's part and and perhaps the congregation's part, but the um, the the parsonage that we have right now on Market Street, um, that's a certainly an opportunity to um, we could sell that and have those funds uh applied towards needs to the church. So um, not saying that's where we're headed, uh, because it's not my decision alone, it's a vote. But um, it's certainly uh an avenue that we could explore uh to find additional funds towards some of these uh initiatives.
Folks, it is quarter to eleven now and um church live stream starts uh at eleven o'clock. I do want to give Case some time though to um present the format for next week's annual meeting because it's going to be different. Um, there's a chance that Pastor Steve and I are going to have to step away just to get ready for worship. I hope that you all join us either live stream or later on. And um, if I don't, if I'm not around at the end of this, thank you very much for taking part. And as you can see, we have some really wonderful leaders in this congregation who have worked very, very hard on all these different projects, and I hope that you join me in thanking them for what they're doing. So, um, Case, go ahead and give us a um uh, an update on the annual meeting.
Well, this is a good test run. Um, the the town hall, we will be using Zoom just like this uh for the annual meeting. And um, I will just kind of hit some highlights uh so that you, you all kind of know what to expect. Uh, obviously, this is different, well regarding, you know, annual meetings, which we're normally doing in the FLC together. So we will be going through uh our agenda and um we'll be establishing quorum by using a poll. Uh, y'all will register when you come into the meeting and identify yourselves uh as as uh, you know, voting members. We'll do what we call a poll and we'll do that for all of our voting. Um, so that would be, you know, approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes. The staff reports, the budget, all the things we've been talking about today. Uh, Pastor, can you post the poll? Um, there's a, along the bottom um menu should be uh should give you that option to click poll.
Um, let's see here. That's not it. Pull. Oh, here we are. Okay. Do you see it?
Not yet.
Oh.
Is there another, do you need to activate?
I have no idea. Um. Let me, does that work?
Nope. That's a picture of me with a big donut.
Ah, okay.
That's terrific.
Oh, boy.
Okay. I think I'm going down a rabbit hole. It's just getting worse. Um, launch polling.
There, there it is.
There it is. Okay.
All right.
That's the right button.
Okay, um, I'm gonna look at all of you. Can you all see, it says sample poll at the top and it says to approve the agenda for the should say for the two thousand and twenty annual meeting. My apologies, I must have uh deleted the last part of that. Um, so this is how we'll be voting. And so the motion uh will be listed uh at the top and it says, in this instance, it says to approve the agenda for the two thousand and twenty. Should say two thousand and twenty annual meeting. Your options down below are, I approve the motion. So if you are attending the annual meeting by yourself um and voting as one person and you approve that motion, you would select that very first choice. If there's several of you who have your spouse with you, so you represent two votes. And so in that instance, if you approve the motion, you would say, we approve the motion and that counts as two votes for two people. Uh, the third option, as you move down, if you do not approve the the motion and you are representing one person, that would be your option to select and that would be the one vote. And then the the last one is the, is the, we do not approve and we're representing two people from our home. Now, on the instance that um, a, a husband and wife don't agree, one approves and one does not approve, you do have the option to select. I approve for one vote and I do not approve for one vote. And you, I would like to invite all of you to submit a vote right now on the sample poll, just to um, just to give it a try. Once you've made your selections, there's a red submit button in the bottom right of that window and you can submit your uh vote. So I would just encourage everyone to be careful when you're doing that, because I think once you voted, we can't bring it, well, actually um, I don't know that we can bring it back up. So be very careful, make sure you've selected the right one and then you submit. So one of the first items that we'll be doing um next week is to approve the two thousand and twenty annual meeting agenda. Um, so that is a preview of how things will go, how we'll vote. We'll, we'll take uh questions and answers the same way we did today. The chat room's an excellent um method to doing that. Um, and so also we can take uh, you know, a raise of hands um in your bottom right, you'll, you probably all see a hand now in my window. In the bottom right, there's like a a a button that says raise hand. You can also raise your hand that way if you have a question during the annual meeting. And so if you want to try doing that, you can, I can see that you guys are all, well, and then there's the emotion, there's the, there's the reactions that the Ripley's are are sharing. Um, so but um, those are a couple of ways, you know, through the chat room, through raising your hand. You can also go this way. Uh, if we have a lot of people, the only concern is if you use your hand this way, that um, we won't necessarily see you because we may not be able to see everyone on our screen. So um, I will certainly take every step possible to um give ample kind of dead air time for folks to just kind of unmute themselves and talk as well. Um. We're following the Roberts Rules of Orders like we've done with every annual meeting. So just a a refresher of what that is, is we'll take, I'll, I'll ask for, you know, for example, I'll say, is there a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty annual meeting agenda? We'll need someone to say so moved. We'll need a second. At that point, I will open it up for discussion for everyone and that's when we can all discuss the items. So when we talk about constitution, budget, uh, we'll be following that same process for each and every one of these. So um, hopefully, this has been uh is there any, are there any, let me stop there. Are there any questions about the voting? I know we're on a little bit of a time crunch, but give you all a chance to, I don't see anybody, it looks like they have any questions with the voting. Now, it looks like Pastor Westfall, the voting's all come in. Pastor Westfall has shared the poll results, which is something we will be able to do with all of you, um, along with my donut. And uh, so, you know, approval of a motion, we approve. Uh, there was an, I do not approve. I happened to click on each one of the single votes. So we'll be able to see the results of each each one of the the polls right after we close it. We will keep them open for a full minute. Um, and then following a minute, we will go ahead and close the poll, show the results and then move on to the next item on the agenda. All right? Um, just one other highlight uh that I wanted to share with everyone. So in past annual meetings, when we're together at the FLC, council and staff would kind of go through each um each report and um whether it's councilperson or staff person, they're welcome to say a few words. The approach we're taking um this year is in that section, I'm going to open it up for questions to council and staff versus going step by step through presidents, through senior pastor, through stewardship, through, you know, children and family ministries. Um, it'll be simply opening it up for questions and answers uh during that period. If we've come to a point where we do not have any more questions uh or any comments, then we will, we will, I will ask for a motion to uh approve the reports and and we'll, we'll move on once we uh carry the motion and the votes uh carry through. So that's a little bit procedurally, a little bit different than we've done in the past. Um, it will be a little more efficient, um, considering that we're all on Zoom. Um, that it felt, you know, that feels like the right approach to take uh versus uh going through each and every report and and having comments. So um, you know, be be aware of that approach. Um, so that is, those are the highlights and and kind of what's going to be different about doing an annual meeting on Zoom. Um, we wanted to do it via Zoom because we want, we want it available to everyone. Not everyone would want to attend at church right now, even if we were open. And so this provides for an opportunity for everyone to to come in and be a part of the annual meeting. Um, last com, uh, only the the last thing that I I will mention, and this will be um visible on screen in our, in our first poll when we go to quorum. To vote, uh, as you all know, you need to be a voting member and the, to be a voting member, you have to be confirmed. And you have to have communed and contributed financially in the last two years. So I wanted to make sure to kind of get that in our recording. I'm sure there's going to be a few people watching this throughout the week, leading up to the annual meeting. So uh, to vote during the meeting, you you need to uh have those three qualifications, be confirmed, uh, have communed and contributed financially in the last two years. Uh, so we're um we're going to ask that, you know, you're all, we're going to use the honor system uh in that process as we take quorum that um, you know, you all uh respond accordingly uh when we take that poll at the beginning of the meeting. So any questions for me regarding the annual meeting?
I've gotta go. See you in.
I'll see you soon on YouTube, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor. Bye.
I don't think I'm seeing any questions um from anyone. So I think we've covered that. I don't believe there's anything left on our town hall. Meeting.
No, there isn't.
All right. Well, everyone, I guess I'll close our town hall. Thank you. Um, reach out to the office with any questions for next week. You can get, pick up a copy of the annual report in the East vestibule. Um, I know.